It's seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting of the Westmoreland City Council to order. It's August the 19th, and we have lots of things to discuss tonight. So, we will start with our devotion, and I think Pastor Milson is going to come in to present that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start by saying something that you guys probably have heard. September 26th is my last Sunday in Westmoreland. I've been here 13 years, and when I came, we had pastors who'd been here 30 years, 20 years. They've all, you know, chosen other paths, and I've been here 13. I'm the longest-serving pastor in the city limits, I think, which is crazy. It just seems like I got here recently. But the city council in the town of Westmoreland has loved me, has taken me in as one of their own, and I'll never forget that. Wherever I go, this town will be part of who I am and what I am, and I'm grateful for that. Those people who say that, you know, "Westmoreland, oh, they're so closed off, and, you know, big old boy, and they only like their own," I am witness that that is not true. That you guys welcome anyone who loves this town, and it's my prayer that you all love this town as well. And I know you do. So, I wanted to say thank you. I'm gonna ask that you continue to support the Amazing Grace Mission. Velma Claypool Lambert has assumed the duties of operating the Amazing Grace Mission. My joke, and it's actually very true, Velma is an equal opportunity offender. She will tell you, you know, what she believes, and that's wonderful. But please continue to support that ministry as you have. Velma is a good administrator. She's a Marine in her past, and she also has ties to this community. And so, continue to support that, if you would, please. If the ministry was just about me, then we've been doing it wrong. It's about what can be done for the people of this town who need it. So, thank you for that support. So, let's, if you would, bow your heads, and let's talk to our Lord. Lord, we approach your throne this evening in the context of Jesus' teaching, and your word being real commandments to love one another, not just simply saying nice things, but doing things, and for your glory. Father, we know that there are people hurting in the world right now, in this nation right now, in this town right now, and we ask that you please help them and make us the instruments of that help, if it is your will. We pray that our commitment to Christ is not directly correlated with our politics. We pray that we, as Christians, would have the same commitment to your commands and desire to worship you under the best or worst of political conditions. In other words, Father, we pray now that each and every one of us here would be in your presence, even if there's a real threat to our freedom. Instill in us the commitment of those early Christians who were willing to die in their own forms before they would deny you before them. But we do pray for the nation we live in. We pray for all the worldly nations of this earth. We pray that we recognize events, whether positive or negative, as spiritual opportunities to serve and glorify your name by helping and teaching those around us, creating us a spiritual outlook towards this world, Father, instead of a worldly outlook towards your kingdom. We pray for our political leaders, our government officials, these men and women here tonight, elected, appointed, hired, those advisors and consultants. We pray for those especially who accepted Jesus. Let their Christianity reign over the temptations to act as the world acts. Let their yeses mean yes, and their noes mean no. Let their actions and leadership reflect your Son's teachings. Allow them to love their enemies and act like it. Allow them to be motivated by the gospel, the gospel of love, and how they treat others. Allow their responsibility to govern effectively and completely overcome any selfish desires. Allow them, Father, to focus on honesty. Let the results of effective governance speak for their ability. We pray for all our leaders everywhere, that they can effectively govern this nation, regardless of political affiliation. Father, I know you don't want us divided over earthly politics, so help us as a nation and individual Christians to recognize this. Help us to strive to be above politics. Give us the wisdom, Father, please, give us the wisdom to seek and understand what the true Christian relationship is to govern. Give us spiritual perspective. This is our prayer to you, Father. Thank you for all the gifts you've given us. I especially, Father, thank you for this wonderful town of Westmoreland, which has been my home. We pray this prayer because Christ died for us, and let the people say, "Amen." Thank you all. God bless you.
Thank you.
Would remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Keesha, if you'll call for a roll, please.
Doug Brown.
Here.
Alicia Head.
Present.
Jerry Kirkman.
Here.
Dana Lee.
Here.
Ross Smalling.
Here.
Chandler Woltersen.
Here.
Let the record reflect that we have everyone present. We have the forum, so we will continue with the meeting. The first item is to adopt the agenda for the meeting.
Make a motion we adopt the agenda for the next meeting.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilman Lee to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. The next item is the public hearings on the Pleasant Grove Road annexation and the plan of services. The first one will be in reference to Resolution R082021-1 on the annexation. So, I will open this public hearing at this time for anyone that has questions, comments, or concerns of anything. The resolutions have been posted quite a bit around town at the site itself, and Ms. Keesha, if you haven't been on the website also.
Thank you. Library, post office, there's several offices involved. And there's also some on the podium that anybody wants to look at.
Okay. So, the public hearing is open, if anyone would like to speak. Okay, question? Going twice?
Our farm joins that property. Or are they gonna do anything, because we have people trespassing hunting and looking for mushrooms and various things on our farm now. If you annex that and they build a subdivision or apartments or wherever it's gonna go there, there's gonna be a lot of people. I'm concerned about trespassers and people possibly dumping on their farm. And also, if you're gonna be building houses or apartments or whatever, is our sewer in our little town gonna be able to support that?
Okay. As far as the trespassing, right now, what we're doing is we're addressing it just as agricultural property, just like it is. There is ordinance, a couple items down, to bring it in as a hard one, which is a low-density residential, which is what a lot of Westmoreland is. As far as the sewer and the water and the infrastructure, they started construction on our new sewer plant Monday of this week. So, we anticipate that all the infrastructure will be in place for that project. You know, right now, we're just annexing the property into the city. I think it's 142 acres, give or take a little bit. Forty of it is already in the city, and the other 100 plus, or 106 acres is what they're asking to come in. If there's anyone here that can address about trespassing, I guess that would be a police department question as much as it would be anybody's.
So, we've got signs posted, and they're either ripped down or ignored.
Yeah, if you see, if you see anyone on the property, I'm sorry. If you see anyone on the property and you've got it posted, you can let us know, and they can be signed.
Vote, is that just in the city? Because most of ours is in the county, but part of it's in the city.
You'd have to call the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, I think that's one of the disadvantages of being out of the city. Yeah, they would have to take it, that's out of the city. If it's in the city, we'd have to heck with it.
We're throwing this property into the annex tonight. They can call the city to lease on that property.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment or concern? Okay, hearing done. I will close the public hearing on Resolution R082021-1 on the annexation and open the public hearing for Resolution R082021-2, which is the plan of services for that area. Floor is open for anyone who wants to speak about it.
That was the public hearing we just had, Mayor. I said that was the public hearing we just had on that.
That was on a resolution for the annexation. Now, this is the one for the plan of services.
Just one required, but you can have another if you don't want to.
Yeah. I wanna make sure I had it covered.
Okay.
I will comment before the council will get ready to vote on these items, that we have met all the requirements that is set forth for that, for advertising, for people we needed to contact, all the local adjacent property owners were sent. And I'm sure you got one, Chris, registered letter from the city. So, we tried to make sure that we followed all the rules. I met with the county mayor today, and the county is excited that we are gonna be able to offer more infrastructure out and bring that in and annex it into the city. So, one last, one last little prayer.
Based on what you've got to appraise when you annex that, you ought to reappraise it.
That will be part of the process. This is just the beginning, so. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close this public hearing on the plan of services, and I'll entertain a motion to vote on this resolution by the city council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass Resolution R082021-1, the annexation of the Harton 6-acre track.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Lee and a second by Councilwoman Woltersen to annex the 106-acre track that is listed in Resolution R082021-1. We're open for discussion.
I do have possible indirect conflict with this, but I will be voting a conscious of this.
Okay, we have a conflict of interest that has been mentioned. Any other? Hearing done. Ms. Keesha, if you will call for a roll, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Head. Yes. Smalling.
Yes.
Woltersen. Yes. Lee.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. The next item is Resolution number R082021-2, and that's for the plan of services for this area. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we pass Resolution R082021-2, Plan of Services.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Woltersen, a second by Councilman Brown to adopt Resolution R082021-2 for plan of services for the proposed annexed area. We're open for discussion.
I'll put in indirect conflict of interest in place there also, and I will be voting.
Okay. So, nobody? Thank you. Anything else?
I wanted, I'd like to comment that the state planner prepared the plan of services for the, except the items that the standard plan that you provided, things in, is not something that we kind of come out of the area with.
That is correct. And in that plan, the school board had 30 days to respond. The county had 30 days to respond, and we, like I said, we tried to make sure we followed all of the rules here, so I think we're good to go. Ms. Keesha, if you'll call for a vote, please.
Smalling.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Head.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Woltersen. Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. The next item is first reading of ordinance 082021-1. It is rezoning it to R1. All of our regulations say that new property coming in that is annexed will come in as low-density residential R1. So, that is the reason that this is taking place. This will be first reading of this next month unless we do a special call meeting. And I don't anticipate a special call meeting for this, but there will be a second reading, and it will have to be advertised in the paper, and there will be a public hearing, so.
I'll make a motion on the first reading of ordinance 082021-1, rezoning to R1.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Lee and a second by Councilman Smalling to adopt ordinance first reading 082021-1 for rezoning to R1 of the proposed annexed area. Is there any discussion?
Please note my possible conflict of interest, and I will be voting.
So, nobody? Anything else? Mr. Brown?
Woltersen? Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. John, does that take effect 30 days, or is it 30 days? So, we will move forward. Ms. Brown has a lot of resolutions to get delivered to the assessor's office, to the county office, property planner's office. There is a list of people that it's got to go to, including the Census Bureau, the Captain Brown's Registered Needs Office. There's a lot of folks that this has to go to, and, but it does take effect in 30 days. And this is the first time any new land has been brought into the corporate city limits since 2010. So, this is a pretty big night, and Mr. Roark, thank you for your assistance and your help, and we got it very soon as we could, so. The next item on it is public comments, and we didn't have anyone that said they wanted to speak, so next is the minutes from the July 15, 2021 meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 15, 2021 meeting.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown to approve the minutes. Have a second by Councilman Lee. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. Ms. Keesha?
Head?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Woltersen? Yes. Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Next item is the July 2021 financial statement.
Make a motion to accept the financial statement for July.
Have a motion by Councilman Lee to accept the financial statement.
I'll second it.
Have a second by Councilman Brown. We're open for discussion. Is there one ready to vote? Ms. Keesha?
Woltersen?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. There's no old business listed on the agenda, so we'll move to the new business. The first item is first reading of ordinance 082021-3, which is to rezone the Hessen property at 1717 Pleasant Grove Road.
Make a motion to pass 082021-3.
I'll second.
Okay.
We're ready for quick discussion.
We actually, I wanted to bring up for discussion that Councilman Smalling wasn't at the work study, so we may want to amend that motion to include the, uh, logic.
I'll spend two, then we'll all have to amend, but we all, him and whoever has always thought that he had to correct something there. So, he's, and the state planner called it his time that he's not got to correct. So, but he's ordered all this material. He's got thousands of dollars worth of material around out there, and he needs to start going ahead and getting footers dug so he can continue working. And he's agreed, Mr. Hessen has, that he will not open that part of the storage lot until he gets a, I'll get a permit. But he can't start building until he can get a building permit. And I want to amend your motion to allow him to obtain the building permit and continue on with construction of these buildings.
I understand some of the confusion.
So, is that a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have an amendment to the original motion, which allows for the building permit to be issued.
We will, yes.
Is there any discussion on that? Okay, we're voting on the amendment now, so you'll call for a roll.
Head?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Woltersen?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the amendment passes, so we'll move to the original motion for the first reading of rezoning for 082021-3. Is there any discussion? Ms. Keesha, if you call for a roll.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Woltersen?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. So, check through City Hall tomorrow, Ms. Hessen, and we'll step back, get him that building rent issued for you, so you can start getting your footers.
We've gotta get Mr. Mills a letter stating once y'all agree on that. That's what he told me.
Okay, we can do that.
As long as it's in a letter, he's good with it.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason's gotta get back to State Department, you know, first, you can't show up.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the salary that we want to set for the health officer and the building coach person. I think the council decided at the work study that it would be an hourly position. Do we have any applications that's coming in for that?
We have several. We've got probably dozens that are ready.
I don't know how we can set that to it, although we've got.
Well, that's fine. I know it was kind of set off of the police department budget, but you're totally correct.
Yeah, we had a branch, didn't we?
So, can we tie back the motion to table this until we know who the person is?
I think you can make any motion.
Motion made, then.
I'm talking about based off the experience track.
Yes.
Motion is to table it? That what you just made a motion? I'll second the motion.
Until the person, who would know who this person is.
Okay, we have a motion to table this, and I guess until the next meeting, we'll discuss it again at that. Motion by Councilman Lee and a second by Councilman Brown. Please call for a roll.
Woltersen?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we had a citizen that came the last time, and we have a citizen here tonight also, that has asked that the roads at Ridgecrest Subdivision be taken into the city. That was Wager's Way, Robbins, Cardinal, and Hummingbird Hill Court. So, I entertain a motion on that.
Mayor?
Go ahead. I'll make the motion to take the streets in at Ridgecrest Subdivision into the city limits.
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilwoman Head to accept the four streets that are in Ridgecrest Subdivision into the city. We're open for discussion.
Can we note the mileage of the roads? Does anyone have that? I saw that in the email, read it.
And, and measured, I think.
Can we just note that for the meeting? It's not, it's not very long.
No, it's not very.
It's not a lot of road, but I'd like to just note it for us. I did measure it, but I didn't write it down. But I do have it at mile.
Well, that subdivision's been built for a long time. They've been providing on these streets, or construction payment, that they've been paying city taxes for a long time. And I think it's time we let those streets. It's unfortunate that it's, that the contractor bankrupted his business project, but I don't think the city kept him out of bond either.
It's right at a mile, the best I remember. But I can't remember exactly what it's right at a mile, it's not.
I don't, I didn't think it was very long, really.
If it's that much, I think, I think Hummingbird Hill. I got it. You got it. Okay. And this is your email here, so I'll just, okay. I'll just, I'll just mention it. Wager's Way was .3 miles. Hummingbird Hill Court is .1 mile. Robbins Trail, .2, and Cardinal Circle, .1. County roads.
Other discussion?
Typically, this is not the process that the developer has to request that the roads be taken. When we normally do this, is it done by just a vote, or is it a vote or a resolution? Guess that's what you're adding.
Normally, you would accept streets with a resolution. Resolution and acceptance.
Is there something like that that has to be prepared with this, or?
I just make my, motion into a resolution from this number.
It resolves the following streets. They're hereby dedicated and accepted by the City of Westmoreland. Name the streets, and, uh, she draw that up later, we'll be a resolution number. We need to name the streets to have them be accepted as a case.
Uh, I know it's a, a bad circumstance here, but I hope it don't set no precedents with, with other.
In the future, if you got subdivisions being built, don't you think this is a learning experience for a part bond upfront in the future, so this doesn't happen? We're, we're planning that zoning commission is working on just that. Uh, we're trying to learn from mistakes that's made in the past and, and give them resolved and correct them. So there, there's lots of things that's happening like that. Any other comments? Ms. Keisha, if you call for roll, please.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Smalley?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the resolution passes, and we'll let you have a see a resolution on that, uh, for a number on it, um, in an email later. The next item is to reappoint Andy Lee and Jocelyn Robinson to the IDB board. Uh, this will be, their terms actually, as we discussed at the work study, their terms actually expired, uh, I guess December thirty-first of twenty twenty. So this will be a six-year term for both of them, but will end in twenty twenty-six. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to reappoint Andy Lee and Jocelyn Robinson to the IDB board.
Second. Have a motion by Council, Councilwoman Wilkerson, and a second by Councilman Brown. We're open for any discussion.
Once again, I do have a conflict of interest here, Andy dear my son. But there's no monetary gain here for him or me. It's a volunteer position, and I will be voting my consensus.
So note it.
I'd like to note the, the work they've both done, um, and the term that they've already served. And, uh, I hope they continue to do that work, uh, the IDB continues to do what's been done.
Very good. Any ideas? Ms. Keisha?
Anne?
Yes.
Smalley?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to advertise for the court clerk position at City Hall. Uh, that is with the retirement of Ms. Debbie, and she is going to be leaving us on September the thirtieth, I think was the date that you, you set. I think that Ms. Keisha or Erin one has an announcement, but in reference to this. Before, before, yeah, before we say anything.
Okay, um, Roger in Public Works has expressed an interest to come and work in City Hall. I handed you all a letter, and, um, Erin and I have discussed it. We think he's, you know, qualified, he has a lot of customer service experience, and, you know, we think that promoting or, you know, promoting is a good idea. Do you have anything else to add to that?
I think it'd be good to have, uh, a guy in City Hall.
Our policy does allow for a lateral transfer. Uh, I don't even, I don't think it would be a raise for him to come over there. I think it's the same scale. So it would be a lateral move, uh, what this, uh, presents to, uh, to Erin. Now, he needs to find another person for, uh, for Public Works, but, uh, it, it's always good when you can promote from within. I've always encouraged it and, and fully supported. Mr. Carter seems like he's, uh, been a great asset to our, to our city, and, uh, he, he does have some good customer service skills, and if anyone would, would like to, uh, to, uh, discuss that with me, I'll be, like, to fill you in after the meeting of the experience that he has, but, um, it's a, it's a, it's a council decision.
He also said that he's interested in taking the classes and stuff, um, if, that if they got any classes and things like that to learn more and stuff like that, with office management and stuff. Not like management, but like, you know, managing his position or whatever. Make sure he got all the skills and everything. I'm making a motion that we advertise for the county court position. I was like, do I need to add something else? Are we advertising? Oh, no, I'm sorry, we're not advertising. Let me retract my motion. I'll make the motion that we, uh, appoint, I believe would be the right word, lateral transfer, uh, Roger Carter into the county, uh, the court clerk position. I apologize.
I second.
Is it, can it?
Yes.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson to, uh, transfer Roger Carter from his current Public Works position into the position at, uh, at City Hall. We're open for discussion.
When will this take effect, on the thirtieth or the thirtieth of June?
Well, one of the reasons that we were trying to get something done was so we very good based on the training provided before Debbie left, so, uh, I, my recommendation to the council would be to, um, let the two supervisors go ahead and work that out, and, uh, and we, uh, we, we have advertised Public Works several times, so we should have some applications there to, uh, to call on from that.
I'm good with this movement, but can we legally do it based on what's on the agenda tonight?
Well, if, um, if you wish, you could amend the agenda.
Do you have a vote to amend the agenda?
Does that need to go through before a next vote?
You have to amend the agenda before you go.
I move that we amend our agenda to include the transfer for Roger Carter from Public Works to City Hall. I second it, Mayor.
It's also included there for Erin, go ahead and, or is he going to advertise, or we have applications?
Uh, I'd go ahead and include it, so we can name it for this.
Okay, I'll add to my motion for our Public Works supervisor to advertise for his open position then. I still second.
That way they can wait for you.
Okay, we have an amendment to the original motion to, by Councilwoman Wilkerson, second by Councilwoman Anne to, uh, the motion for the amendment to, uh, hire Roger, or transfer Roger Carter to this position at City Hall.
I've got a question. How long will it take for him to receive his certification to be able to do court clerk, I mean court? And then will there be a gap in there, and if so, who has the qualifications to do that, to keep it going?
Um, no one has a court clerk qualification other than Debbie, but I believe that we have talked to the state, and when we were talking about, like, Debbie Kelly doing it, and discussed that there would be a gap there, that we didn't have anybody, and they said as long as it was within so many years, that we should ask someone to be good.
Another question I got, uh, I guess.
Did you first amend the agenda, then decide, then y'all can discuss?
We're making the agenda.
This is what you're going to ask, amend the agenda, discuss what you've been discussing.
Okay, call, call for roll, please, Ms. Keisha.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalley?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment is adopted, so now we move to the, uh, original motion. So, uh, let's see, Councilman Brown made that motion, and Councilwoman Wilkerson made the second, so we're open for discussion there.
And there, and there, again, I'm good, but Debbie has stressed to me so many times, her like that we need some Spanish-speaking person there. Would Roger be willing to take Spanish classes?
I would say so, but I'm not going to speak for him on that.
But that, uh, that is not something that is a requirement. It was just something that we added in, but also note that we are in the process of, uh, getting the language line in for the entire city, so, uh, I don't think that that is anything that is a problem. Other concerns? Yes, Ms. Debbie?
Classes for court will start again in October.
October.
Unless with COVID, it gets put off, but I believe it normally starts October.
So we need to get him registered right away.
Well, they haven't sent anything out yet, but usually that's when it is.
Okay, other questions? Okay, we're voting on the original motion now.
Smalley?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Erin, if you would let Mr. Carter know that he is going to have a new supervisor, huh?
I will.
Thank both of you for, uh, working on that. I know that, uh, you put some time into it, so. Next item on the agenda is the nine twelve Park Street.
Do we need to vote on that, Erin, go ahead and advertise?
Uh, that is part of the motion. Yeah, that's, that's already taken care of. Uh, next item is the nine twelve Park Street.
I don't think we have an update, you have the other thing.
Okay, no, I don't have that on, thanks. Uh, request by Officer Winans from part-time officer to a full-time partial, uh, full-time officer, and also the handler of Drexel.
Also move a motion, make your motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson. We're open for discussion.
Chief, what's the plan?
Uh, okay, I was just wondering if, since he's been an employee here, would he have to wait ninety days for benefits, or since he's already an employee and he's just going from part-time to full-time, would he be able to go ahead and start getting, uh, benefits in full-time?
Normally, what we do is he's hired as a full-time officer tonight, so this becomes his full-time date. Uh, as the council makes, uh, their motions, any recommendations, uh, it's, it's totally up to him, but, uh, that, that's the purpose of bringing him to the council is to start their, their hire date as such. Uh, possibly in the past, well, they have allowed, uh, part-time to, to count as its seniority, so we'll, we'll see. You know, the, the, the motion's already been made, so.
We're in discussion of it?
We're, we're in discussion.
I would, I would be okay with that, since he has been in town with us. I feel that that would be, we should honor that.
Yeah, that's the way I interpret, interpret the, uh, policy that we wrote. I think we did some changes to that when we talked about last, last year, maybe. I interpreted this, he's a part-time employee that tops cards, so.
I do have additional questions. When will he be going to school for his training?
We're hoping to get him in, there's a class in October, and there's another one in January. We haven't heard back yet, get, all paperwork's been turned in, but then they didn't weber-tipped before, you know? And, and like Debbie mentioned on something else, people don't know what's going to happen with COVID, so. Our hope is October, because until we get him into that class, he's got to ride with another officer, so we won't get him in this, which is, and.
You're talking about the academy?
Yeah, if, if there's one in October, and we don't get him in that one, we, we should.
How long, how long is that academy that he's?
About twelve weeks.
Twelve?
Twelve weeks.
Okay, so the motion is to, uh, put, place him in this position and go ahead and give him the time served as, as part-time for, for benefits purposes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for roll, please.
Anne?
Yes.
Smalley?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Glad to have you with us, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next item. Been trying to get to this one all night. Nine twelve Park Street lease extension. Uh, you've heard the discussions about this, uh, you know, uh, what is happening, but, uh, your purpose here tonight is to discuss if you want to extend this lease until, what was it? It was twenty thirty-seven? Uh, so, uh, it, it expires on November fifth, uh, twenty twenty-three, and he's asking for a fifteen-year extension, so. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do not extend the lease.
Okay, that's a motion.
I mean, I'm looking to get something off in here.
We can do that or read and that.
Typically, you don't make a negative.
Okay, I didn't know, we're sitting here, I didn't fucking get it to get us moving. Okay, I'll go with that.
If the motion dies for lack of a second. Well, lack of a second, yeah.
Yeah, I was trying my.
Okay, gotta have a little phone. Next item is first reading of ordinance number zero eight two zero two one dash two, which is the budget amendment. Uh, you have that, uh, in your package?
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that the, uh, the motion is for one, I mean, the amendment is for one hundred thousand dollars to be transferred from our, um, our fund to, uh, to street aid.
I'll make the motion of first reading of ordinance zero eight two zero two one dash two for the budget amendment.
Say it, motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Brown, a second by Councilman Lee, uh, for first reading of ordinance number zero eight two zero two one dash two, which is a budget amendment to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance to, uh, to street aid. We're open for discussion.
Might note that this figure could change for the second reading, because we discussed doing two hundred thousand dollars for paving, uh, and to add, add thirty-six thousand, like, two hundred thousand, so this figure could change.
I did talk to Mr. Cool about that. It was after this was sent out.
It was after this was sent out. Um, he said as far as what we have in fund balance, it is, pretty much wasn't our bank account. He said there's nothing restricted unless it's a separate, uh, you know, specific account or something like police vehicles or something like that. So, um.
And you do have some of those.
Right, but it's not in the general fund bank account itself. It's in its own separate.
Okay, what about, what about the fire truck?
It is in the fire department.
Okay, sure.
We wrote it out.
So you put it into their fund?
Into their fire department fund, yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
So we have more than enough, if you want to know the balance, from July thirtieth, if I can give it to you or?
Do you have it with you?
I do.
Go ahead, go ahead and tell us.
Okay. So the ending balance in the general fund on July thirtieth was seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
You think you're going to want to make it the higher match, you need to go ahead and do it, because doubling it would be like, it'd need to be ordinance, it'd be such a dramatic change.
We had talked about doing it at like one sixty-four and adding to the thirty-six, would be us the two hundred.
That would be something to be okay on second reading, I think, if you're there.
So this stands and what is, on second reading, you're saying?
If you're going to do it now for what, a hundred and sixty-four thousand? If you want to add the other thirty-four, second reading could.
Okay.
That would not be such a great change, that would require another reading.
The, uh, the thirty-six.
Yeah, we've already got that.
It's already in the budget.
Okay, I mean, you're not going to change anything on second reading.
So, no, we're, we're, we're looking at one hundred and sixty-four thousand to put two to thirty-six to, to, or something. And, uh, I might, uh, might note, and Mr. Grant has probably heard more about this than I have, it's my understanding that, uh, in the last, uh, day or, or, or so, the Senate did pass the infrastructure bill, uh, to send to, to Congress and, uh, the, the House is going to be looking at that. So, uh, it, it didn't make one hurdle, so it, it would be nice if we could get some more federal funding to help us with our roads right now. But this will be a, uh, a good, uh, a good starting place.
So we need, do we need to go ahead and take it thirty-six thousand if we've got in there to go ahead and change this figure tonight, to be done with?
You can make it appropriate for your thousand, but including the sixty, the thirty-six thousand which you're already in that name. That, that just makes it clear what you're doing.
We need to amend that motion or can we just?
What, what's the ordinance you got in front of, what amount does it have? Oh, well, you definitely can change that.
So you're, I hear, I hear it's probably worth that thirty-six thousand that over last year.
I mean, it's from time.
And what, what kind of thing, free to call that?
It was left over from the, uh.
It was prepayable.
Yeah. Prepayable.
We got that money, we stayed to pay, we didn't use it all.
It was a covenant, correct?
Yeah, right. So what we're going to do is add whatever it takes to this amount here, come out to two hundred thousand dollars.
Just appropriate two hundred thousand dollars, this would be a part of the funding of that two hundred thousand. Make an order, just appropriate two hundred thousand to include the thirty-six thousand K as well from the prior budget.
Hey, let's see if I can get it. So Doug, I would draw my second.
I would draw the original motion to add that appropriation to the, the now current motion that I'm making now to, um, pass the ordinance or for first, excuse me, zero eight two zero two one dash two with that change that we just mentioned. Everybody's understanding that.
And I'll say it there.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Leaf to, um, accept ordinance zero eight two zero two one dash two in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the transfer. But, uh, within that two hundred thousand dollars will include the thirty-six thousand, whatever the odd change is on it.
Five thirteen.
Five thirteen? To allow for a total of two hundred thousand dollars for, uh, street paving projects. Any other discussion? Ms. Keisha, whenever you're ready.
One percent?
Yes.
Smalley?
Yes.
Head?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is, is Fall Cleanup Day. Uh, that was, uh, added after the work study by, uh, our Public Works Superintendent. So, uh, it's, uh, something that we have done, there is money in the budget for either a Fall Cleanup Day or a Spring Cleanup Day. But, uh, we just, we just funded for, for one, so, so to the council.
Mr. Salfmore, how much, uh, is it?
We need to get a motion.
On source. I make a motion to, um, do the, uh, Fall Cleanup Day.
Ms. Head makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Smalling makes, he has a second. We're open for discussion now.
Mr. Salfmore, how much does it cost to, uh, do the cleanup day?
Um, to be honest with you, I've had to run the numbers, I have actually ran them, uh, to figure it out, to be honest with you. But we, we would get three to four dumpsters, uh, and then we'd have to pay everybody that comes in, which would be more than likely to be at least six people, probably eight, including myself. Um, so you'd be looking at anywhere from five to seven people, uh, plus the dumpsters. Uh, but we do have a large scrap pile that we got from last year, plus some stuff that we've been picking up and saving and other people dropped off and things like that. So we're, we would also cash that in, uh, take, take it to the, uh, the dump and, and get the checks for that to help pay for the dumpsters.
So if we do this Fall Cleanup Day, we won't have a Spring one, correct? At least that's what we.
That, that's where it stands right now. That was the way the budget was written. And the cost of the last cleanup day was roughly sixteen hundred dollars. So that's, that's why that amount was put in there. Uh, salaries and all of that would be covered under the, the other line. So there's sixteen hundred to, uh, rent the dumpsters with. So there, there may be some left and if, uh, the sanitation budget, uh, of course, we, we had a lot of changes in it at the last minute that we discussed. So, um, you know, by the time that, uh, March rolls around, you'll, you'll kind of know if you've got to exonerate or not to, to do a second cleanup day.
I think it's much needed. I've heard many people speak about how much trash and how much junk is in the community and, um, this gives them the opportunity before we get the codes in. Uh, they can't say that they didn't have opportunity to clean up their mess. Uh, so I think it's much needed. Uh, we all drive around, we all see it. So I think it, I know it's sixteen hundred dollars, that is a lot of money. Um, but our community needs to be cleaned up. And if you don't provide something for them to take it to, we can't fuss about it. Uh, so that's where I stand on it.
I think the city ought to cover any funds that the scrap pile does not cover for spring, so you got both a fall and a spring cleanup day. I know we've had them both in the past.
Yeah, budgets got cut quite a bit this year. Any other discussion? Ms. Keisha?
Head?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
One percent?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smalley?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. That's the last item on the agenda, if I hear a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
Next question. Hey, Erin, what's the date of?
Uh, thank you.